I'd like to call to order the session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Yes.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe.
Here.
All right, welcome everyone this evening. Right before our meeting this evening, we had a presentation and a Q and A session with Mr. Vaca, who's the Capital District Manager for the United States Postal Service, and the new Silverstream Postmaster, which includes our area here, Mr. Donna. And so if folks missed that, it is you can go back after the council meeting tonight and look at that. And I think it was, I want to thank Representative Jamie Raskin's office, particularly Krista Burton and Congressman Raskin's office for helping us put that together, and Councilmember Kovar and Circe for bringing this to our attention. So hopefully lots of changes will be made soon. All right, looking forward, no changes to our agenda this evening. As we look at the weeks ahead, next week is October. We will begin our meeting with a proclamation recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we will have remarks by Dr. Tayak, who's a Piscataway historian. We'll have then an update by our youth council. Our voting session will include second reading ordinance awarding a contract for services with startup in residence, a resolution providing for appointments to committees. Our work session next week, there are two of them. The first is a discussion of amendments to the Tacoma Park Code Title 11, Section 11.04.060 regarding placement of private signs and advertisements in public right-of-way. And we will also continue our conversation on our discussion of Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. We will not be meeting on Wednesday, October 9th, as that is Yung Kapor. Then our next meeting will be on Wednesday, October 16th. Our voting session for that night will be a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for legislative advocate. Tentatively, we'll have a resolution approving Community Development Block Grant Program. Tentatively, a first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code regarding placement of private signs and advertisements in the public right-of-way. And tentatively, a resolution adopting the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. Our work sessions on October 16th include discussion of replacement vehicle purchases, a discussion of technology purchases, and we will be coming back to trees. We all have a discussion of the tree ordinance, covering general discussion of goals, faster and clearer process on information, tree impact assessment, tree protection plan, and appeals. And so that is all we have for the moment. All right, so moving forward this evening, we actually have a public hearing on Community Development Block Grant Programs. The Community Development Block Grant Program was initiated in 1974 and is one of the oldest programs at the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. These grants provide an annual basis to communities to ensure decent affordable housing for all, to provide services to the most vulnerable, to create jobs, and expand business opportunities. On June 15th in 2016, the council adopted Resolution 2016-16, limiting the expenditure of these grant allocations to capital projects. Tacoma Park's CBDG, CDBG funds are provided as a pass-through through Montgomery County. Qualifying capital projects must be located in designated eligible census tracts illustrated on the map that accompanies the agenda item this evening. Community members are encouraged to comment during the hearing tonight on the needs of the city's low and moderate income households, and to suggest appropriate capital projects to address those needs. Do we have anyone who has signed up, or anyone who is here for the public hearing on these grants? Okay, seeing no one. If you weren't able to get here this evening but have comments, please send them to us. So now we'll have public comments on voting items. Our first voting item this evening is the second reading ordinance approving a police mutual aid agreement between the City of Tacoma Park and the City of Laurel. Any public comments on that? Seeing none, we'll move to our second item, which is a single reading ordinance approving a contract for tree removal and planting. Seeing no public comments on that, we'll move to our next item, which is a single reading ordinance purchasing a replacement of a skid steer. Seeing no public comments on that, we'll move to the next item, which is a resolution providing for reappointment to the Tree Commission. Seeing no public comments on that, we'll now move to our voting session. And the first item is a second reading ordinance approving a police mutual aid agreement between the City of Tacoma Park and the City of Laurel. I don't believe there's been any changes since the first reading. Would someone like to move the second, the ordinance? Councilwoman Kostic moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Circe, second. Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, will the Clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Next voting item is a single reading ordinance approving a contract for tree removal and planting. Do we have any information on that, or?
We have the information that's in the, in the document. I know that there were a few questions today that I received, just, and I'll reiterate what I said the first time, I think, when this came up, which is that the urban forest manager and residents together help identify locations for tree plantings. We have, and for prunings and for removals. We have a contract that we wish to award to Excel Tree Experts, which is the low bidder of $47,548 for removal, for pruning and removal of trees in the right-of-ways. It's at 43 locations. Thirty-three are removals, 65 are maintenance pruning, and the chart that shows where each of those is located is in your package. This is a standard projects, standard projects that we do, and encourage your, encourage your support.
Great. All right, Councilmember Kovar, do you have a question?
Yeah. Is this the right time to ask, or?
Sure, then we can, if it's a clarifying question.
Move it first, or?
I could move it first. Would someone like to move the single reading ordinance approving a contract for tree removal and planting?
Sure.
Councilwoman Dibala, do I have a second? Second. Councilwoman Circe seconds it. Now, Councilmember Kovar, if you want to ask your question?
Sure. Two questions actually. So, one, on the replanting, and I just received, or received a short time ago and didn't get a chance to read it yet, so I apologize for that, an email from, from Mr. Ben Sefan about the replanting, but that's, one of the questions I had was, so, these will be removed, and obviously they may not be replanted right away. I believe he indicated he's working on a list for that.
That's right.
And so, which makes sense. I think it would be beneficial to us if we would have an opportunity to review that list, but in particular, when we had a recent group, smaller group of replantings that took place, at least a couple of the streets were in Ward 1, and at that point, the list was already well-formulated, and there had been a lot of interaction with the residents, so it didn't seem appropriate for me to say, "Don't go forward with the ones you've already agreed to plant." But if we're at an earlier stage in the process, this time, to me, and my colleagues may or may not agree with me, but emphasizing more heavily native plants, to me, except when there's perhaps a major climate change reason not to, if that would exist, is the direction I think we ought to go in. So I, we're not voting on that today.
That's right.
I understand that, but I, but I want to put the sort of stake in the ground on that point.
We certainly heard that. Yes, thank you. Yes, this is, this is for removal and for maintenance. That's what this particular contract's about.
And then one other question I had was, and we can, I may talk about this later in the council comments, but do we know to what extent, if any of these removals are connected to the oak tree infestation issue that's been affecting some parts of the city recently? I don't know if that's, it wasn't evident from the sheet, but...
So I think that this, this list was prepared earlier. Most of the removals are not oak trees.
Right.
So I, I think that...
But it was possible to just check on the ones that are, whether it's that, or just other kinds of things that happened.
I can ask.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Great. Councilwoman Dibala.
Yeah, I, I had residents asking some of the same questions, so I won't repeat Councilmember Kovar's questions, but do me a favor, since I didn't see the email. Tell me what the process is for this particular group of trees. So for example, a bunch of the trees that are being removed are in the Long Branch Sligo neighborhood. So how would, how would residents there go about, how do we do that?
Most of this is, I mean, these are, these are city trees. So we're going through, for replanting? I'm not, I'm not addressing replanting necessarily tonight. This is, this is for maintenance and pruning. We encourage people to report if they see a city tree that needs to, that seems in distress or needs some assistance. We encourage that. We do lots of, it's a small city. We do a lot of driving around and seeing where those issues are, and where there seems to be a few, a need for more trees. We identify them. It's, it's part of our standard process. I am going to follow up with some of the questions that I've heard today about that and get back with you.
Yeah, okay. And most of these are not the dead oaks, so does that presume then that we're going to get another list at some point with the dead oaks? And I guess my question is, what's the timing on, well, it's not my question. What the resident, residents are asking me is, what's the timing on removal of the dead oaks that are city oaks?
I can't answer that. We recognize that if there are city trees that are in need of removing, or are a danger to other trees, that we would act very quickly, and we tend to act very quickly on those.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
This, this tonight is a very standard contract of our regular work. It's not so much dealing with kind of emergency situations.
Okay. Councilwoman Kostic.
I just have two quick things. One is, I see the list of places that will be pruned or removed. Is it possible to get information out either to us, so we can forward it on, or directly to residents before that happens, just so they're aware that it's going to happen in their neighborhood sometime, you know, a week or so before it is planned? And then the other thing is, I've heard a lot of concern from people regarding the challenge of watering and maintaining the trees in the right-of-way, because particularly when it's a new planting, they need to be watered fairly frequently in order to survive. And it, it seems like a lot of people either don't know that they're supposed to be watering the trees, and expect the city to be doing it, or don't have the capacity, you know, maybe they don't have a hose that's long enough, whatever, whatever the case may be. And that seems to contribute to a lot of those trees dying. So I don't need an answer tonight, but maybe we can look into that for the future.
I'll get back to you on that. I'll have to double-check with the, with the Director of Public Works, but I seem to remember that some time ago, we took on those responsibilities and did not require the homeowner to, to be responsible for them at the early stages of planting, for that reason. And I will double-check and see what our standard process is.
Yeah, my understanding is that, I do, from when I've interacted with Daryl on questions about this, it seems like there are some times when watering is done, but it's not very frequently. And so when there's a case, like right now, when it's just super dry, then residents kind of need to step up in order to make sure that the trees survive, and they may not realize that they need to do that.
I'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Next, we have a single reading ordinance approving purchase of a replacement skid steer. Would someone like to move that ordinance? Councilwoman Circe, do I have a second?
Sure.
Councilwoman Dibala, any questions or comments on the skid steer?
I have a quick question.
Oh, actually, Councilwoman Dibala beat you to it. Do you have a question?
No.
Oh, nope. Councilwoman Kostic.
So I know that there's no answer to this right now, but I'm wondering, as we're thinking about climate in the future, if we could consider and look into whether there are any electric versions of large trucks like this?
Okay, this is a little Bobcat.
Okay.
So it's a smaller vehicle. And by having them, it keeps us from having to use some of the larger equipment, but there may be some other options. And we certainly look very carefully at whatever kind of better fuel, equipment we can use. So if there's something, I'm sure we're on it, but I will double-check.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, this is probably a purchase that will be around for a little while, so as we're doing those purchases, if we can think about other options.
And we absolutely try that, but I will find out about this.
Actually, I just have a quick follow-up question. Does this come under, I know the deputy city manager, when he, you first came to the city, you created, I'm going to get the name wrong, a...
The vehicular.
Yeah.
Yeah, does this come under that?
Yes.
So I, I...
I believe, I believe so, actually.
Well, even if it doesn't, I think it's, I think it would be useful, because, you know, I applaud you for when you got here, for putting this in place, to remind the city council and residents of the process that...
Sure, yeah.
We now have in place.
And, and this is part of the CIP, and what goes to the CIP is the result of that process. And do you want me to give a very quick overview of it? So we have a committee that's comprised of myself, the Public Works Director, the Police Chief, because a majority of our fleet is our, our police vehicles, and the Fleet Maintenance Manager. And we go through a process where vehicle by vehicle, we use a formula that's based on number of years in service, number of miles that the vehicle has, or in some cases with heavy machinery, hours utilized, things like that, that basically assign each of the vehicles a score that we use to determine whether or not we actually need to replace, and the year that it's due to be replaced, or if we can add some life to it, and in some cases, we need to replace things a little bit earlier. So there's a very deliberative process that we use, and multiple staff members are involved in making a recommendation to the city manager about what to include in each recommended budget CIP.
And part of that is to go through and identify, is there now, like for patrol cars, is it better to use a different kind of fuel, and that kind of thing? That's a, we're routinely asked that, so we look at that.
And we do always try to look for more environmental-friendly vehicles, and have, have each year moved more and more, although sometimes only slightly, towards more electric vehicles. As far as the heavy machinery goes, I think there's going to be a revolution in the next 10 to 20 years, but they're very, there's a lot of experimental equipment right now that are being made in some European countries that I've read about, and they're very expensive to get your hands on, an electric excavator, for example, at this point. I do think we'll move in that direction, I think most places will, but I think it'll be a little bit of time. We'll continue to look at our options every year.
And, and all of our heavy machinery is biodiesel, not just diesel.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Dibala, now, do you have a question?
Uh, no.
Okay. Will the Clerk call the roll on this one?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, our last voting item is a resolution providing for a reappointment to the Tacoma Park Tree Commission. We are reappointing Ms. Murray, whose term is to expire on September 30th, and she has applied for reappointment, which we are all very happy that she is doing that, as we are in the middle of redoing the tree ordinance. So will someone like to move the resolution providing for reappointment to the Tree Commission? Councilman, Councilmember Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Siemens, any comments? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. Now we will move on to any other public comments this evening? If you have any other public comments, Mr. Lovelace will get you the microphone, but, Go ahead, Mr. Lovelace.
Okay, this is Pat Lovelace, the official peace delegate. I live at 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, Ward 4, Franklin Apartments. And I want to ask people out there, especially the city council, do you know when and what time and location for the street festival coming up? I think it's the first Sunday of October, I'm not sure. But we've had it in the past, and I'm wondering if we're having it this year, because I haven't heard anything about it.
October 6th.
And I'd like to find out when it is, because I've, I've got transportation to it.
Mr. Lovelace, it's, it's October 6th.
October the 6th?
Yes.
At what time?
10 to 5.
10 to 5. Okay, well, everybody out there, I got the news out.
[laughing].
But I got transportation to go out there, so look, look for the peace sign out there. And also, I just want to ask people out there to be more mindful of their environment, because the kids came out, they cut class and everything else and walked out, to come down to the, to the strike, strike for the environment, or strike for the climate. The demonstration we had last Friday, and it was on a work day, and we had a pretty good turnout. I was down there, me and Nathan went down there, and it was really great. And I want to thank Nathan for bringing me down, Nathan Harrington. And I want to thank Larry Callahan for bringing me to the other events, like the street festival and the Tacoma Park Folk Festival this year. And I want to thank him very much for this, because my transportation is very, very sparse now. And I'd like to know if anyone can help me get transportation to the city council meetings, because it's only a couple of blocks down from where I live. And I'd like to know if anyone can help me do that. And they can leave, they can get my number from Terry Siemens, he's got my number. And also, and if you want to call me up, my number is 240-305-1189. So, because I'm trying to find transportation to get to the city events, and it's, it's really, really difficult to be able to do that now. So please give me a call if you can do it. And also, I want to thank the city council for the work they've done for us in the city. And also, one question I didn't get a chance to ask the, the postal service when they were here today is, how many, how many postal delivery people have been bitten by dogs lately? You know, has the postman ever been bitten by the dog, or is that just a myth now?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. We'll pass along your question.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We'll pass that question on to the postal. I'm curious.
Thank you.
Ah, canine friends are faring with them.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Any other public comments this evening?
My name's Larry Silverman.
Oh, wait, one second, Larry, sorry. Okay, you're on.
My name's Larry Silverman. I live on Birch Avenue, and I've been following with great interest the public discussion of climate and environment, stormwater, and the trees and so forth. And it's, this is a field I've worked in all my adult life. I had the honor of working on the first Clean Air and Clean Water Act back when I was very young. And so I can't not comment. First of all, with regard to climate, I'll make it real fast, it's not going to, I can't say what I want to say in three minutes, but I'll start, maybe I'll come back again. With regard to climate, I think the discussion of the issue in the city has been very noble, thinking about how we can diminish our contribution to the overall problem. But I think as a practical matter, and particularly you as practical politicians, need to think in a little bit more defensive manner about, about climate than say, we'll, we could have a small impact if we worked very hard on the climate. But the climate is very likely to have a huge impact on us. So we'll have flooding, we'll have storms, we'll have droughts, and what's the city's plan to deal with these things? I think that really is a more urgent matter. I, I hope we get electric vehicles, I really do, but we need to protect ourselves, and I think there's not been enough focus on that. That's number one. Number two, with regard to flooding, we have a very good stormwater program here. I spoke with Mr. Braithwaite, very capable person, as you know. But keep in mind, the flooding issue is not totally covered by stormwater. There are lots of floods that come from groundwater, and particularly in this very complicated ecosystem we live in or live over. And I think there's been no consideration in a holistic way of the risks of flooding. A third, water quality. I just wanted to say that Tacoma Park is a polluter of Sligo Creek, and if you look at the water quality aspects of it, you see that it hasn't gotten better. So I don't have the answer to this, but I think it should be addressed. Finally, the, I think you should rename your tree commission the Forest Commission, because the, the aim here, except for, you know, cases of ancient trees or something very special, the aim here is not so much to save this particular tree or that particular tree, but to maintain a forest that serves our purposes, and serves nature's purposes. And I think that's not quite enough focus on that subject. Also, I think we should be realistic about this. What will be the effect of the great beautiful trees we love in a major storm? They're likely very much to complicate our lives in severe ways, and our life, and our safety as well. So again, this is, I don't get the sense that this is people, wonderful people looking at this issue of... at this issue of forestry are really thinking it through as far as they can and should. And I would encourage you to move in that direction. Again, I'd like to come back sometime to detail some of these things.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Silverman, if you could email your comments too, that's also really helpful so that we have them.
Will do.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
Good evening, my name's Brian Richmond, I'm a recently retired federal project officer with U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and through the University of Maryland Cooperative Extension and Maryland Department of Natural Resources, I'm also a trained Maryland woodland steward. I'd like to thank him for his comments, I echo his concerns. Let me begin by thanking you for reading Bringing Nature Home: How You Can Sustain Wildlife with Native Plants by Professor Douglas Tallamy. As the book points out, the native species is essential for supporting our ecological web that we all depend on. And now with many of our oak trees dying in Tacoma Park, and thousands of acres of forests burning in the Amazon and releasing their stored carbon into the atmosphere, we're in a crisis situation in which we need to take action. Our health and indeed our very existence depends upon supporting our local environment. As 16-year-old Greta Thunberg said last week during her speeches to the United Nations Congress and the U.N. General Assembly, "This is not the time and place for dreams, this is the time to wake up." People are suffering, people are dying, entire ecosystems are collapsing, and we're in the beginning of a mass extinction. This is a moment in history we must be wide awake. And in this crisis situation, we must ask ourselves, what is the best way for us in Tacoma Park to think globally and act locally? How can we help recover from the loss of our tree canopy and support more carbon sequestration? An old Chinese proverb says the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, and the second best time is now. As members of Tacoma Park City Council, I ask that you contact your constituents and pass on what you've learned from Bringing Nature Home, and urge them to plant a native species tree. They may even want to take advantage of Tacoma Park's fall 2019 tree planting program with a deadline of October 11th. Again, thank you for reading Bringing Nature Home, and please proactively help us to take action locally to address climate change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we will now move on to council comments. Any council members have comments tonight? No? Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. I want to let everybody know that we, members of the council, as well as city staff, will be at Tacoma Park Elementary School this Friday at dismissal time from about 3:45 until 5 o'clock to just provide an opportunity for people to chat with us, to learn a little bit more about city programs. Recreation Department staff will be there to answer questions if people are interested in learning more about programs for themselves or their children. And as I said, a number of us will be there as well, so I hope you'll come on out and talk with us then. We'll also have free lemonade. I also want to remind people of the regular monthly HIRE events that are going on here at the community center. Our economic development manager worked with WorkSource Montgomery to bring in a representative from WorkSource Montgomery to the community center every month, and the next time they will be here is this coming Tuesday, October 1st, from 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. And this is, HIRE stands for Helping Individuals Reach Employment. It's an opportunity for people to come in and have a one-on-one discussion with someone who can assist them with individualized employment services, like resume help, interview help, helping them target and come up with strategies for their job search, and identify any additional resources they may need. So this is a great opportunity, and I hope people will consider coming into the community center to do that. And then finally, I didn't see this on the city manager's update, so I just wanted to make sure to get the word out about it. There were a couple of meetings this past week related to the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, and there is also a survey that residents can take if you weren't able to go to one of those events to just share your thoughts on it. And that survey is open through September 30th. So the link, I believe, is on the website. People can go onto the Climate Change, Sustainability and Climate Action Plan website on the city website and find that link. Thank you.
Right. Councilwoman DeBala?
Yes, it's Climate Week, and following up on what Councilmember Kostick said, I want to thank the Ward 2 residents who volunteered their homes and who showed up for climate conversations the last week or two. We can do another one if anybody wants to. Filling out the climate survey was on my list also to remind people to do that. And today, the, at the Metropolitan Council of Governments, the Committee on Energy and Environment and Climate had a panel with a number of European climate action-oriented mayors. They announced that the, that this region's been selected as one of four to receive technical assistance and training and funding for, from the Global Conference of Mayors to help bolster both local and regional efforts. And they announced that the region, the Metropolitan Region COG, is also doing a climate action plan. So we found out last week at a lunch that we organized, that there's something like 12 in the region between local communities and counties that are doing local climate action plans, and we all got together and talked, and then now we've got the regional support, and I just think that that is fabulous, I really do, because we need all the help we can get. But I wanted, I want to make sure everybody knew about that, that that's additional resources coming to us focused on best practices. What do we do? How do we do it? And I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Circe.
Good evening, everyone. First, I guess keeping in the theme of climate and the environment, I want to thank all of the organizers of Sweep the Creek last weekend. I had an opportunity to volunteer at near, gosh, what's the name of it?
Did you go to Hellwood?
No, not, Becca Lily, thank you. It's been a long day. Becca Lily, and definitely had a chance to get down and dirty and pick up some trash. I definitely want to make a note for the city manager that it will be important for us to continue to work with park police in terms of camping in the park. Also want to remind folks about Night Market, so Tacoma Lane and Crossroads, we will be on Ann Street again, partying, there will be lots of bands, Silver Branch Brewery will be there again, so it'll be great food, great beer, great music, so definitely come out. It will be from 4 until 8:30 on Saturday. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. A few climate-related things. Also, I wanted to mention, one, some people in the community are familiar with Mike Tidwell, he's a Ward 1 resident, and he's the head of the Chesapeake Climate Action Network, and he had a, really a powerful op-ed in The Post on Monday, and he was talking about the protests that took place to block some of the streets in the downtown parts of DC to try to bring attention to the importance of taking action on climate change, and I'm pleased that the city is attempting to do that. But Mike's article, if you haven't read it, is a great call to action and just something that people might want to look at, and since he's a local guy, I thought it would be worth mentioning that. I've gotten a lot of questions lately about recycling, and I noticed, Ms. Braithwaite is here, I'm not expecting any answer now, but there's been quite a bit of talk about how the whole chain of where recycling, recycled products can be sent to with certain foreign countries no longer involved, and has that changed the market? And should people just continue putting their things out in the same way they always had before, or are there differences that are now occurring? And it would just be great at some point to get a little bit of information on that. I'm not requesting that you stop something else you're doing right now, but just at some point it'd be helpful to have that. We've talked a little bit about the oak trees, and I just want to say I continue to think that to the extent we can treat that as a very serious emergency, and I know we've talked a little bit about whether it would be possible to schedule some sort of meeting. I know that, or public forum, I know that the staff is going to be consulting with state and county and academic experts and so on on some of the questions, not just relating to how to afford taking down the trees, which is not really something that falls within their expertise, but the more scientific aspects of the treatments and how quickly it has to be done, and is there a concern about the chemicals getting into the groundwater and what happens to the beetles in the off-season, if we can call it that, over the winter? All those kinds of questions, I think we still need to have that kind of information. So I'd like to encourage us to plan events to present that, or have information circulated in other ways to the community. And then just two other things I did want to mention. With the mayor, I was at the annual pie contest this past weekend. Well, the best one, the winning one was an apple that had the apples cut to look like flowers, and it was really pretty cool. I don't think all the fruit that I consumed as part of that counts like as one of my fruit courses for the day, so I've been trying to eat actual apples to make up for that. But it was really, it was a really great event, and I think something like $700 also went to the program to feed lower-income people. So it was fun to do, but also a good cause. And then the last thing, it's a somber note, I think some people in the city knew of Pierre Perault, who was a longtime Ward 1 resident and one of the sort of unofficial historians in the community, and this was also in The Post recently. He unfortunately passed away within the last few weeks. I had an opportunity to see him a few weeks beforehand, and even then, he was still working on some of the historical kinds of analysis that he was known for. So having him no longer part of the community is, I think, a big loss, and he was actually prepared some really fascinating material just a little bit before he passed on the history of the different parcels of land and when they were purchased and from whom that actually led to the, more or less, the current borders of the city. And so I think that's something that through his involvement with Historic Tacoma that eventually will be made available to the public, but you could actually see, depending on where you live in the city, when that land was first purchased by B.F. Gilbert or in other ways sort of incorporated into the city. So just for his wife and his friends and family, I just want to say how much we miss and how much we appreciate having him in the city for so long. So thank you.
Any other council comments?
Sorry.
Oh, Councilmember Smith.
I have something for the city manager. I was over at Washington Aventis Hospital's campus, and there was a limb down on one of their trees. I don't know if it's an oak tree, but it would be very helpful if they, if Washington Aventis University knows what's going on with the oak trees dying, and they know how to treat some of these trees. There was yellow tape around the tree, so I don't know if they're going to have it cut down, but it would be good to make sure that they know the severity of the situation.
Actually, you know, funny you mention that, because when we went to the Washington Aventis University Gala, what was it, two weeks ago, I talked to their arborist all about this. So it's really funny, he's been their arborist for decades and knows, has known our urban forest manager and arborist, so yeah, we should tell them about the limb, but we had a long conversation about the white oaks and what's happening, so, yeah.
And one other thing, can we put out a note to residents about how the police department is patrolling the campus so that people, if they are concerned, they know that the police is going to be around just driving by the campus?
That came up at the Long Branch Sligo Neighborhood Association meeting also.
Thank you.
Great, all right, seeing no other public comments, I mean, council comments. The only thing I have left that folks haven't mentioned is we're doing another lunch from 12 to, 12 to 2 o'clock on Friday at El Campeón on Merrimack. So if folks have time to join us this Friday, that would be great. And I'll turn over the city manager.
Thank you very much. One other thing that did happen this last weekend, I didn't put in my notes, and I saw a couple people there, was the Long Branch Week festivals.
Oh, yeah.
This past weekend and through the week.
It feels like a long time ago.
I have to say that it's really delightful to have somebody plan a party in my front yard that they do all the planning for, it stops exactly at 9:00, and they, you know, and they clean all up. It was really quite, and yeah, and Papoose Alley, you can't beat that. That was very nice. But I, you know, we forget often that Long Branch is part of, is one of our business areas, and it's something that we need to support when we're shopping local. City received the Maryland Bike Ways Grant to add to our list of bike ways grant money, $235,000, to continue work on the new F-bikeway. We never get all that we ask for, we always have to kind of fit it in, but it does represent strong support by the state for this project, and we will keep working so that we end up with bike ways along New Hampshire Avenue. We have a small cell tower application at 902 Merrimack Drive. This came in a long time ago, but then finally went through the process that's been established. So this is the first one under our small cell tower ordinance and our admin regs. Consistent with the regulations, we posted the application materials online, and we'll be holding a public meeting on September 30th at 7:30 p.m. here. The applicant is also requires to post a notice on the site and provide notice to properties within 500 feet of the proposed installation.
Could I just jump in for that on that? So I think it's just important to note that, you know, we had all fought, worked for during our development of the legislation and later the regulations that the staff put together to make sure that there was a good level of required public notification and engagement. So this is actually the first example of that, and the only, I guess, the only application we've gotten so far. So I really encourage anyone who's concerned about or interested in the installation or potential installation of small cell towers in the city, this is, this is sort of the kickoff of that process, where people get to ask questions and can see what it's like. And, you know, as we talked about, the Federal Communications Commission took away a lot of the authority that cities would normally have to decide where and when and under what circumstances to have these towers located. But this public meeting and some of the other steps that will flow after that is what we do have, and so I think it's important for people to attend that meeting if they're able to, again, which is this coming Monday at 7:00.
7:30.
7:30, here in the, in the community center. Thanks.
That's right.
City manager, is there any way possible that we can have notifications distributed to those residents that are in the immediate vicinity of the proposed cell tower?
It is a requirement that they do it.
Okay.
That we do it, but that they do it.
But they do it. Do we know that they've sent out those notifications and that, okay, perfect, thank you.
Ms. Braithwaite said yes. Wanted to follow up on race equity training funds. I'll start first with that. $10,000 was put in the city's budget for race equity facilitation and training. What we would like to do is to issue a request for proposals as part of the Community Partnership Program that would outline our city's interests in that again, and allow organizations who are able to meet those criteria to submit proposals. The council would have an opportunity to review the draft, and then it would come back to you for contract approval. Starting tomorrow, we have four staff members participating in the training cohort sponsored by COG in partnership with the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. The training will last about a year with monthly meetings and homework assignments. Those participating from city staff include Lieutenant Gilbert from the Police Department, our new HR Director Tracy Smith, Roz Grisby, and Samira Cook Gaines from Housing and Community Development. We look forward to learning from their experiences and having them bring back, you know, real work for us to do and to learn from. Wanted to give a heads up that there will be dead tree and limb removal in the property at the Tacoma Junction. NDC has been working with our urban forest manager on identifying which trees need to be removed, which limbs need to be pruned, all of that kind of thing. I know there's been discussions with the neighborhood, but I will also say that as soon as one person walks out there, we will get calls. So I'm just letting people know, this is something that we've been planned for and is being done in coordination with our urban forest manager. It's likely that the removal of the dead trees and limbs will happen on Monday and Tuesday of next week, so September 30th and October 1st. So September 30th and October 1st. Our Recreation Department, you may not have seen quite as many of our rec staff around if you've been in the building. That's because they're trading off at sessions in Baltimore at the National Parks and Recreation Convention. It's in Baltimore this year, so many more people are able to take part in that. So we're pleased that our regular staff get to learn from peers from across the country.
And do we participate in Maryland's Recreation Association?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So our staff goes to the state ones, but rarely do we have more than, well, one or two people get to go to the national one ever. So it's fortunate this time it's in Baltimore.
Okay, thank you.
There's a 5K race called Cristala Superhero that is, I don't see the definition on this, but it affects, it's to help children in Uganda, I think. And so the, I'm sorry?
They have an orphanage in Uganda.
An orphanage in Uganda, thank you. And so on Sunday, September 29th, we will have several street segments closed to vehicles while the 5K races is being done from about 8:00 in the morning to, for three hours. And so we've been getting the word out, but just wanted to let folks know because it's not been one that we're used to having every year. We have the Lunch with the Mayor, the Lemonade Stand, both been mentioned for this Friday. And then next Wednesday in the morning is Walk to School Day, followed by Coffee with the Cop. So plenty of stuff coming up. Hiring update, we still are hiring and so please look at the careers section on our website. I am glad to see that a number of positions are being filled, so taking a little bit of a deep breath about that. And then there's some conferences coming up that the council's aware of, the MML Fall Conference in mid-October, and the International City County Management Association conferences after that. Answered any questions yet?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Now we'll move on to our work session, our discussion of housing and economic development strategic plan. And I think I'm going to turn it over to the city manager for this.
Yes, to me. Yeah, I get to talk for a bit. Let me settle. So because we're down to the nitty-gritty, I'm putting text up in front of you. And you can change it however you want. I'm going to look at this. So we've been working on this for a number of years. Many of you have been very actively involved in some of the details. I want to go over some of the goals, objectives, and strategies that we feel like we've kind of narrowed things down to, make sure we're on the right path, identify things that you may want to still think about. If there are elements that you feel need to have further discussion before you're comfortable approving this document, we need to identify what those are and figure out when to do that. If there are things that we'd like to have more discussion about, but we can adopt first and then figure out like when in the coming months we handle it, we can identify that. And if we're somehow off the mark or there's some other areas of disagreement among council members, I'm very interested in learning that. There's a couple of things in the overview that I don't think are of dispute, but kind of helps set the stage, and I want to talk about that for just a minute. Our residential housing stock is about half multifamily. Most of it is rent stabilized and half are single-family detached homes, many of which are becoming more costly to live in and to purchase. City has had almost no new housing units or multifamily, housing units or commercial buildings since the 1970s, and that means that all of our space is older and we don't have a tradition of building and that's something that we're learning how to do. As we look to meet our critical housing and commercial development needs, we've got a couple key things. One is we have positive and negative challenges of the purple line. We are glad the purple line is coming, but we do know that it puts immediate difficulty on our business owners and it can lead to increased housing costs. We have the closing of the hospital site in the heart of the city, and we have changing Washington DC market forces. As we look forward on these recommendations in this strategic plan, we're also looking to consider every action through a race equity lens, take into account the climate change resiliency needs of our existing and future residential and commercial properties. And very importantly, and somehow this is something that hasn't been talked about too much recently, part of the reason we're doing this is to develop a financial base to support ongoing city services that has less dependence on residential real property tax. We simply can't just not build and yet have our current residents just pay more and more money. So when we look at the overall vision for the work, it's to ensure a community that protects the rights of all people, and we had a little bit of change to some of the language here, embraces and provides equitable access to opportunities for people of all ages, races, ethnicities, citizenship, status, abilities, gender identities, and sexual orientations, maintains and enhances the physical characteristics of the residential and commercial neighborhoods, and is safe, sustainable, accessible, and affordable across socioeconomic groups. Those are, that's the huge vision. It's one that I think we can be proud of, but it is a big, big amount to bite off. As we go through this, that's part of your discussion. I think what is here is practical. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't just put this forward if I didn't think that.
Can I just ask a point of information?
Sure.
Because we've seen many different versions of the goals and objectives as we've worked on this. And is this overall vision that you just read brand-new or does it go back to earlier versions? Just remind me.
This has been around for several months.
It's been around for a while, okay.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, so it just wasn't in some of them, but it's been around for a while.
There's only a few things, there's only one or two points in this document that is, are new, and I will note those.
Okay, thank you.
Most of this has been talked about, talked about, talked about, and, but, but just trying to reorganize it so that it's easily understood, easily used.
If I could just interrupt the city manager for one more time, because I think this was to kind of frame, and I know I've said this before individually and as we discussed this, the goal of this document is, so we started this process a number of years ago. We hired a consultant. They came back and we have all a stack of paper like this with a lot of data, got a great deal of input from residents. The goal of this document is to take that huge stack of information and bring it all together in a document that can basically be our roadmap moving forward on housing and economic development and something that is digestible, easily referenced, that we can use as we're advocating at the county level and the state level, and something that our amazing staff can use as they're also talking to outside entities and looking at their work. So our goal is to really have this be, you know, like a 10-page or less document, kind of bringing everything together. But I just want to thank Councilwoman DeBala for, you know, anchoring that and bringing us back to when we started this.
Right. And as we come back to you next week and the following week or the following meeting, we'll go back and I'll reiterate the different kinds of outreach that have been done, the surveys that have been done, the way that we've gotten to this point. What I'm trying to have here is an opportunity to take what was a whole lot of good ideas and wording questions and see if I can have a document that then we can work with and put together for that.
Yeah, one, one point that I do want to raise is that the overall vision is very commendable, but I also want to make sure that all of the different descriptors are actually, we have some activities underway that are noted in this document that feed into it. And there are some that are very, very clear and apparent, makes perfect sense. There may be other aspects such as like safety. How are we ensuring that this plan also addresses aspects of safety? Are we, is the idea that some of the strategies that relate to the physical condition might include lighting, security cam, those kinds of things would be part of that eligibility package? So that's the only thing that I would encourage because the vision is quite large, is very substantial.
Right.
Which is not typical. And that would mean that we would need to make sure that what we're outlining in terms of the objectives and strategies can link back to the vision that we've laid out here.
I appreciate that. And I think as we go through, you'll see this, especially when we're talking about that everyone has the right to live in a safe, walkable, bikeable, accessible, attractive community, neighborhood building, all of those kinds of things. And if we didn't say safe exactly, clearly, then we want to make that yes. Some of the other identifications here, especially in terms of all the different kinds of people, are only referenced more in the anti-discrimination provisions here, but they were not spelled out. And that's something that we could either spell out or we could identify when we put the indicators about how do we count and measure. So we've kind of gone through a number of ideas, and one of the ideas was to borrow the idea of the three Ps. So we have a preserve, a produce, and protect. It's kind of a cheat sheet for the way that we go through this, and it took me a little bit to make sure that I could distinguish among them. Under preserve existing businesses and affordable housing in Tacoma Park, including and revitalizing areas, we're talking about what exists right now. And how do we maintain that? And how do we maintain the people who are here? Then we have a whole production, produce more stuff, produce more housing, produce more opportunities for businesses to meet all these various needs. The very last one is, I think, an interesting one because it's a, it's a protect. And so part of the question and part of the way that we were looking at this when we really got to the nitty-gritty of the different objectives is identifying how you differentiate the first bullet from the third bullet. And so this is protecting renters, homeowners, and local businesses from discrimination and displacement. So that's not just, that's not just preserving them, but this is protecting and protecting our environment from destruction. And so that's something that I think as we look through, I really try, at first we had some of this kind of muddled a little bit, so I was trying to be careful to distinguish amongst.
So one point that I do think is important in terms of that distinction is the preservation is about the folks who are here. The protection should be about everyone, including those folks that are new.
Exactly, exactly. So kind of going back to the work of the consultants that we had, the Cloud Burst Group, et cetera, early on in this process, they had kind of a goal for housing and a goal for economic development, and we've modified them a little bit, but it really was, goes back to that. So under housing, ensure that a range of safe, high-quality, affordable, and stable housing options are equitably available in neighborhoods throughout the community. On economic development, there wasn't a lot of original discussion, more just about jobs. And so I think it's important that we broaden this, and I appreciate Councilwoman Rukastik's comments on this. So now we have ensure that all may benefit from economic well-being, a high quality of life, a stable tax base by creating and retaining jobs, by promoting workforce development and entrepreneurship, by retaining and attracting businesses, and by encouraging the development and redevelopment of commercial mixed-use and residential properties. Councilmember Kova today wondered, should we, somewhere in this early section, add something, goals or something related to race equity and climate change? We certainly mentioned that elsewhere. I can argue either way. I think it's, if there's some language that somebody wants to put in here or just to note that there's also these focuses that's included in the document.
I was going to say, I think in an earlier draft, we had mention of race equity and climate change in the overview.
And there's some parts that were, that have been taken out and whatever, so maybe that's where that.
Because I think, and I think this goes to some comments Councilwoman Searcy has made in earlier drafts, is like, what's a goal? What's an objective? What's a vision?
That's right.
And so I'm, I want the race equity and climate change in here. I'd be concerned maybe putting it here if it gets confusing. So I just, maybe in the overview, make sure it's there.
Yeah, and I, just to clarify, I didn't necessarily mean it had to be.
Yeah.
Right where those two goals are, as much as it does appear numerous times later, but I think to the extent that we want to emphasize that we anticipate both those points as being, I don't know what the word is, motifs throughout the document. At some point earlier in the process, they should be mentioned. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be right at that spot.
So one of the things that is not here are some of the very good suggestions and wonderful graphics of Councilmember Searcy, et cetera. When we put the full document together, we'll have all the council goals, you know, and all the council priorities, the detail about the race equity focus. There's a lot of other stuff that would go in here. For the purpose of this conversation, I was focusing on this, but I've made this note. So I appreciate it.
I do just want to reiterate that by adding for goal two, all of the buys, the buys are in fact strategies that are noted later in the document.
Okay.
So it's important to make sure that we're clearly communicating the goal or what we are trying to achieve, which is different from the how we plan to achieve it, which would be our strategies.
So for that, would you prefer, similar to goal one, just to have, ensure that all may benefit from economic well-being, a high quality of life, and a stable tax base?
Period. And then the strategies, we should make sure that the strategies that are noted in the remainder of the document.
We have all this, yeah.
Are hitting all of the buys.
Yeah. I can try that for the next time. So under preserve, in this version, we have five objectives. Preserve the affordability of the existing multifamily housing stock. And I want to mention, and I will go through this in just a moment, one of the real advantages that Tacoma Park has is our rent stabilized, rent stabilized housing. And almost all multifamily buildings are either rent stabilized housing or they have some other protection for affordable units.
And by multifamily, you mean?
By multifamily, I mean more than one unit in a building. This tends not to call out, but you'll see I have some language related to common homeownership communities, which is often known as condominiums. But the thing that I wanted, the point that I wanted to make is that we actually have long-term protection of our, of a good portion of our rental housing. And that is unusual for the DC area. It's unusual for our surrounding area. It helps us as we deal with purple line issues. So the next, so the objective two focuses on the physical condition of existing low to moderate-cost housing stock that can be single-family homes as well as multifamily. The third one is more of a, is a soft thing. It's improve the capacity of residents, property owners, and business owners to be able to manage their properties and have organizations, strong organizations. Fourth objective is to retain local businesses. And the fifth is to get as much help as we can as we go through this process. One of the things, and I, and as we go through, I'll keep calling out and I push back a little bit with people who have made wording changes, is I do not want to have this come out as a document that is the city does it all. So it's how does, how do we have the county pull up and do its share? How do we have the state come and do its share? How do we have other entities partner with us to get some of this work done?
How do we do that?
Well, that's, I mean, that's, there's some points in here for that, but maybe there's some other specificity we need to have for it.
Real quick, I just want to make two quick points. So in terms of rent stabilization and the pilot program, if I remember correctly, there were recommendations that were made by the consultant in terms of. were recommendations that were made by the consultant in terms of revisiting and perhaps even considering modification of some aspects of these programs.
That's right.
Does the current strategies that are listed here, is it status quo? Is it, we're planning to modify? I mean, I see for the rent stabilization, consider a modification of the program if needed to improve functionality. But that to me kind of means something different from, one of our main strategies is to revisit this program, make necessary tweaks, and reroll it out. So is it, we're gonna keep it the way it is? Are we revisiting it? Are we trying to decide? Are we not wanting to be very specific right now about what we're trying to do?
So that's the question.
All of the above worked for me.
Right. So that's a question, and certainly is Councilwoman Rukovar's interest, that we identify, and it's my suggestion in order to particularly deal with this, is if there are some of these elements that need to be discussed by council before you're comfortable voting on this, we need to know which those are. If there are things that you'd like to kind of put the pin in and say, we want to come back and have these discussions, I'd like to know that tonight if possible. And then we can like work and prioritize those. One of the things in the discussions that we have had about the rent stabilization program is that there was a lot of pushback with the original consultant's recommendations that seemed to very much lessen rent stabilization. I have not got the sense that this council is prepared to make significant changes to the rent stabilization program. There may be some, the way that I have assumed your comments and recommendations to be is that it may be some tweaking so that it's not as burdensome on landlords and our staff about how those things function, but that essentially we would keep the program pretty much as it is. So that is how this particular strategy A is written.
Okay.
So I would love to know your opinion about that.
Yeah. So I think for these types of documents, you don't need to get in the weeds about the actual, like, step-by-step approach that you're going to take. But I do think that it might be helpful to, like, make sure that, like, for the rent stabilization, we say, consider modifications, and staff think of, okay, then a next work session, once this sucker is approved, because we need to get it approved, is you all offering your professional opinion in terms of what the consultant raised, what the current landscape of the city looks like, what would be some potential options for tweaks that might make some of the administrative things easier. So we don't need to lay that out here, but if the idea is clearly to maintain the status quo, and I think it sounds like what you're trying to do is get our opinion on whether or not we clearly just want to maintain the status quo, or clearly say we're open to having future discussions about the program in and of itself and how it spells out, then we might need to make those tweaks. So for rent stabilization, we say, consider modifications, which I would agree. For pilot, we don't necessarily, we just say such as, but we don't specific, because that was another program that was explicitly called out, we don't explicitly say, we're gonna consider modifications.
Right. And in fact, if I can jump to pilots, one of the discussions that the council has had, and I want to come back to, is what are our city's criteria for pilots?
Right.
And so that could be called out here or not, but in any event, it needs to come back to council.
Yeah.
And yes, exactly, you know, what are, and the same thing with tax credits. What are our criteria for expanding tax credits that we may have? That needs to come back to council. Do you need to have, and so then the question that I have is, do you need to have those discussions, or some semblance of those discussions, before you adopt this document, or within some established timeframe thereafter?
So keeping in mind the idea of this being a roadmap,
Mm-hmm.
I would say, no. You don't need these answers before we say, yes, we think that figuring out rent stabilization, figuring out how we're gonna leverage pilots, figuring out how we're gonna issue tax credits are gonna be priority things that should be a part of our work plan as we try to tackle our goals related to housing and economic development. We don't need to have all of the logistics. We will figure out the logistics as we're implementing the roadmap that's here. Others may not agree, but for me personally, I just want to know, you know, if it is something, to me, it's different than we're gonna continue to maintain what we have versus part of our work plan is to actually take a critical eye to some of the things, or current things that we have at our disposal that we could use, that previously we received feedback that we need to reconsider.
And I just want to also lift up the fact that the staff, when in June or July, presented an iteration of this, gave us this Excel spreadsheet that
List those, some of those that we wanted.
List some of them, and one of them is modify the city's pilot program, establish criteria for the administration of the program. So part of this is, you know, how do we use this document, which gets at basically the work plan for the department?
And for the council.
And this one's the higher level. So anyway, that's just to add to what you were saying, Councilwoman Circe.
So I believe Councilwoman Rukovar has a different opinion about.
Okay.
Well, thank you for the discussion, and I appreciate it from my colleague. I agree that we don't want to, in this document, be down in the level of the weeds of what appears in the staff implementation spreadsheet, because that's not, I think, where we contribute well. And then if specific issues come up around those things, we can address them when they do. But I do think there are some broader discussions about some of these topics that we really haven't had and that we ought to have before we approve this. And, you know, it's case by case, and people may disagree with me either about the individual topics or about the need to do that at all, but I think just to go to, I don't know if any changes are needed in rent stabilization at all, but if they are, I'd rather see if we can say, well, these are the kinds of changes we want now, as opposed to just saying, well, maybe we'll do it, and then later on, then we still have to have that same conversation. And if we either rule it out or rule in and say, well, the only thing we really want to do is maybe just to make something up is, you know, facilitate high-performing landlords being able to get more flexibility to make repairs, just to make that up. We haven't talked about it. We haven't talked about it.
Well, actually, we have. I mean, on rent stabilization, we did.
Why don't we say it then?
Well, because we had input from some renters, and Cheer was here, and we did that, and we said, okay, there are some things we want to consider, but it's, you know, I feel like sometimes it's chicken and egg. Like, we said, all right, but we need to have this overall plan before we're starting to dig into some of these specific things. And if we sit, if we have to stop now and go into those changes to our rent stabilization, we're never gonna pass this plan.
My point is that we had several discussions, and, you know, maybe people don't agree with me, but I was under the assumption that some of those things that we had tentatively talked about would be part of this plan. We had a package of renter assistance kinds of issues that, yeah, maybe it was even in earlier city council, I don't know. But to me, if we just say, we're gonna think about helping renters, certainly we are, but we haven't, this document won't actually give us that type of roadmap, because all it's gonna say is, later on, we're gonna have that conversation. So my preference is to at least explore some of these things, not at the detailed level, but at the top-line level. Maybe we find out we don't even want to get into those things. But to me, there's a space between these strategies, on the one hand, which are still fairly general, though more specific than the goals and objectives, and the detailed staff implementation, which is where we say, here are some of the programs we're actually thinking about doing to bring this about.
So can you give me an example of what you would have under rent stabilization? Because the items that we discussed with the groups were pretty much in the weeds. It was like extend, you know, notification to tenants and other things. I mean, it was, it was pretty weedsy.
Yeah, but it was things like, I mean, rent stabilization just came up now. That wouldn't necessarily be the first one I'd pick up, but I appreciate that Councilwoman Circe mentioned. But one of the things was, you know, should the council have a role or not in approving or signing off on or being notified when there are proposals to go above the required percentage? And I thought we all said, well, at least we want to be notified. So.
See, to me, that's way too easy for this document. That's way, but
Well, but that's just rent stabilization. I mean, there's any number of issues where we could do it. Look, if people don't agree with that, that's fine. I don't think the document's as detailed as I think it should be for this purpose right now.
And I agree that we should be tracking those things, and I don't know that we have those actually documented in any form, but I don't know that this document's the right place for that, because it is far more detailed than a strategic plan, I think. So I would just request maybe that the city manager, you know, document those things that we've talked about.
So I'll go back over, as we go through tonight, you know, I'm gonna try to go through the items relatively quickly tonight. These were important ones. I'm glad we stopped on these, but I think
But what I'm talking about is actually, you know, documenting those more detailed items that are related to this, but really don't belong in this document.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
For me, the defining line is, what are those big levers that we have that would get us the biggest bang for the buck? Right? So what are the big things that we have, or the big tools, the big kind of bodies of work that we would need to undertake to really see some improvement in terms of the goals that we've outlined? And there may be some things that's really in the weeds, but they don't, they don't rise up to being like something that we can really hang our hat on and really make a tweak that we would see some substantial change happen as a result. So for me, there are some things that are weedy, there are some things that are big. For me, rent stabilization and pilot, big, because there's like two of our major levers that we have, that I do think would warrant some substantial conversations on what we want to do with them in order to advance our goals.
Right. So there's, so in strategy A and strategy B, there's, you know, coming back to you, with some of our recommendations about how we might modify the rent stabilization programs just to make it work better, and there may be some areas where you end up having a policy discussion. Pilot criteria is a major one that needs to come back to you. Tax credits is one that needs to come back to you. Under grants, we do have the housing reserve. We do not have criteria of how to spend it. Now, we can spend it on one project like that. So there's, so there's a certain amount where the more criteria we put, you know, the more problem that we have. But it's the, you know, that's, those are ones that I think the council in particular really does need to spend time and adjust on those items. As long as you're comfortable with keeping rent stabilization, though, I'd like to keep that in here.
I'd also like to add that I think it would be useful, when we adopt this, to include some of those things that we want to come back to in our resolution itself, because I think that could be a good place where we get at some of these things. Because I understand where Councilmember Kovar is coming from in terms of wanting the more specifics, but I also think, as we've discussed, this is a long-term, longer-term document, and these are things that we can't all decide before we adopt the document. So having a few whereas clauses that note what, or resolve clauses that note exactly, you know, the specific work sessions we want to have, I think would be a useful way to address some of that.
I was gonna say that as far as what this document describes, so strategy A, continue the rent stabilization program and tweak it. B, we're talking about considering criteria, much more, much larger clarifications to the program, more direction to these programs. So maybe starting out by just saying that we're gonna do these programs, maybe there's another verb, or maybe we add clarify, clarify the criteria, clarify the rules for these programs. And then we've set the stage for, we know we want to take a broader look at how these things work, and so, okay, so all I'm trying to say is, maybe we need another verb in the
Well, maybe. And so under strategy B, the point of strategy B was to work with those buildings that are mostly run by nonprofits that have, are operating under these criteria where they have to have X number of units that are at certain income levels of the residents and certain other income levels and that kind of thing, which provides a number of units that are affordable that are not in our rent stabilization program. So how is it that we continue to maintain those buildings and those services that don't fit into the rent stabilization program? So, you know, it was identifying ways that we can support them. Now, how we support them, and so I'll look and see what kind of verbs or other criteria we can put about, you know, some work needs to be identified as to the criteria that we use to support them. And that's what I'm hearing here. Under strategy C, this is also still on existing multifamily housing stock. I note, in particular, energy efficiency is a way to help make multifamily housing stock affordable. This is not getting to what you see under the next category of production, where there's a lot of construction and other kinds of ways that we can make something more climate change resilient and have other kinds of efficiencies.
Because again, this is specific to multifamily.
This is specific to preserving
Multifamily is not just high-rise buildings.
It's Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying.
Right. It can be a four-unit building. There's all kinds of, we have an interesting mix of multifamily properties. Then how do we conserve and improve the physical condition of existing low to moderate-cost housing stock? This is an area that keeps coming up from residents. I don't have much money. I have a small house. How do I keep it? How do we, over time, when it gets sold, it not turn into an $800,000 house? I mean, these are the questions that keep coming up. So we look at what kind of work that we can have with grant funds, with partners, that can facilitate residential improvements, including improvements to mechanical systems, which includes, you know, energy efficiency and a variety of those kinds of things, building materials, landscaping, and aesthetics. This also gets to the point that poor people don't need to live in an ugly building. And, you know, what is it that we can do to make sure that this meets that? This may be a place where the concept of safe might need to be called out in terms of security.
And I would add on this that we should include having up the electric and plumbing.
Right. That's the mechanical systems, yeah.
Well, but mechanical can also be the cooling system.
Right.
Right. But when you have
But plumbing and all that.
Plumbing and electrical, and also replacing windows, because
Yeah.
because of the lead issue.
Right. There's windows, there's also, also elevators.
Well, that's safety, too.
What?
The window, safety.
And then, yes, there's that. So the next one is facilitating partnerships and policy changes that would permit or encourage commercial or nonprofit use in portions of residential buildings or properties to support economic stability. This came out of the discussion that we had when Gwen Wright from the Montgomery County Planning Department did a tour of Washington Venice Hospital campus down Maple Avenue, and two of the properties on Maple Avenue that have extra property, but are not doing well economically. And so part of the idea is if a mini master plan process, which is what's being proposed, takes place, there may be ways that there could be some development inside or next to some of these buildings that might help make the bottom line work to keep the property otherwise affordable and have some economic self-sufficiency. Since this is, that's a very new idea, this is one of those that is new to this document. And so if people have concerns about it, I'd like to know.
So you're talking about three C?
I'm talking about three B. Number two B, facilitate partnerships that would permit or encourage commercial or nonprofit use in portions of residential buildings. We have, like at Park Ritchie, we've got a barber shop and so, so we have some of that, but this might be just a little bit larger of a way to have a nonprofit office in a building that helps pay the energy costs.
Yeah. No, when you explained it, it made sense. When I first read it, I was like, I have no idea what this means.
Then modify the capital improvements process and other regulations to encourage and facilitate building and energy efficiency improvements. This is one where we know there is a problem that we need to get back to. If somebody wants to improve their building and they're a mom-and-pop shop, they don't follow the rules. They don't, they throw away their receipts, they don't have the things. And so there are ways that we can make this so that it helps especially the smaller landlord to to be able to get capital improvement funds for the work that they legitimately do on their property.
That's another place you can add safety.
And that's, I'm sorry?
That's another place you could add safety.
Okay, absolutely.
So the capital-
Sorry, I'm adding safety everywhere now. I was everywhere. And now we're just gonna-
I appreciate safety everywhere.
So the capital improvements process is the city's cap-
Yes, it's, it's the cities under, especially under rent stabilization. But there may be other regulations that we have or that the county has that also hinder, um, building owners from making improvements that maybe we could have, see facilitated and, and moved forward. So then Objective Three is approve, improving the capacity of residents, property owners and business owners to maintain their property, to manage, uh, their associations, whether it's a tenant association, homeowner association, condominium building association, business organization, and to access resources. This, you know, it's really helpful when people have capacity to lobby for themselves. And so how do we get them capacity building training? How do we, so one of the things might be that, in, in Strategy B, in some of the discussions that we've had with some, um, of the condominium associations, they're completely overwhelmed by one big capital project and they can't focus on all the other things they need to do for their buildings. So sometimes it may be useful to have some funds come in and replace the elevator so they can do other kinds of capacity building. So, so as we were talking, that's why we put that, some of that language in, in B. And then expanding opportunities for economic self-sufficiency for Tacoma Park residences and businesses. The more money you make, the more you can pay your bills, the more you can improve your properties. So if we can get some job training and some other kinds of ways, some entrepreneurship that helps people be more economically self-sufficient, it helps us all.
Can I just make a comment on that one?
Uh-huh.
That's one that is vague enough that I don't really understand it unless you explain it. So maybe there's some other words that could be used-
Okay.
-to make that a little more clear.
Strategy C?
Yeah, three C. Like where you were on two B was also sort of, I didn't understand that one either, till it was explained.
I appreciate knowing that because, you know, you can only look at this so, so much. It helps to have another set of eyes. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Real quick, in terms of Objective Three, um, and you gave the example of the condominiums and, you know, having lived in a condo, you buy a place and you are, you never think that it's your job to run a however many unit building, right? So people are thinking they're just buying a condo and they join a board and the next thing you know, they're managing a 200-unit building. Do, is the idea that in addition to trying to find trainings with partners and funds, would we ever consider requirements of, um, condo communities in terms of how they are established, like making sure that all of the condo communities have established, um, boards, are, have regular check-ins with the city notifying who they are? Like, has there ever been any thought about putting any kind of requirements on condo communities to report to the city and would that be a strategy?
There are some state requirements, but sometimes it depends on how many units is involved. There's the county's common homeownership, um, community organize, associate, um, department that works with them that gives advice on that. But it may be something that could be, you know, we, we give out lots of rules about things. When you buy your house, you gotta know about city tree laws, you gotta know whatever. So I wouldn't rule out saying, here's, you know, and we have, if you are a landlord, you have to go through landlord training. So maybe there's some other thing that we put somebody through if that's what we wanna do.
Just, again, not as completely familiar with what the county may require, but as we're thinking about some of these strategies and program requirements in terms of connecting boards to money, we may want to start thinking about, um, whether or not the city wants to put some, some stipulations on the condo board so that they are, one, they're aware of who we are, right? Because it's not just you come to us when you're broke and you need, or you, your elevator is tore up. But you have to come to us when you establish, so we know that you exist. And I think it may also be something that might be helpful as we talk about later objectives. And if our goal is to have new, more dense development that might include condo developers in the future, that they're not just kind of leaving boards somewhat high and dry with the building that the owners typically know very little about. Like, so if there are some requirements that would be put in place for new developers as well, like, hey, when you turn this building over, it needs to have a board and it needs to, and they need to check in with the city and we know who they are. So just kind of putting it out there as something to think about.
Appreciate that very much. Um, Objective Four is retain local businesses. So this is one that I say local businesses. Um, it's not, in some other locations, we've taken that word, local, out. But this is for the protection of existing, this is the preserv- preservation of existing businesses. So there's a lot of back and forth about, I've, I've left in some language here that was suggested by Councilmember Kostik. I still have a little bit of an issue related to this in terms of what, what our point was on Strategy A was to ensure that we as a city and the county know who the businesses are here and what their needs are and that the businesses also know who we are and what the resources are from the county and that kind of thing. So, you know, the question is, how much is it just, you know, how do we describe that? And I'm still, I'm still struggling a little bit with language on that one.
Yeah, I think, I mean, to me, it's more of a wording thing than any, anything. To me, creating connections is basically a similar concept. I, I just don't want it to stop at familiarity because I think it's important that there's also a sense of connection felt among the businesses, that they feel comfortable and they understand what is available, um, at the city and county level. And that, it's not just sort of, oh, I know it's there, but that they feel connected to it.
Yeah, and so I don't hear that when I hear connections, but I understand it. So maybe there is, maybe that's good enough. In Strategy B, this one is one that comes up as part of the concern about the purple line or whatever. As redevelopment occurs, how do we keep local businesses in Tacoma Park? It may not be in the same location that they're in. As businesses thrive, they may wanna move locations. So we need to not just say you have to stay in your same place. So we have in the same or different location in the city. And we have through agreements, incentives, as well as an understanding of these particular businesses or the needs of a commercial area. And this is an opportunity, um, for us to really talk with the developer too, about if a developer's coming in with a proposal, how is it that they're working with the existing businesses? How do we, what, do they have some, through some of our incentives, can they do something to, to help, um, ensure the sustainability of the businesses that are already there?
You know, I think this is one where racial equity is really implicated and public engagement needs to happen. And so to the extent that those can be built explicitly into this, I think that would be very important.
It certainly is mentioned in the third, um, major, um, section under preserve. But, um, I mean, protect, but we can add it in here as well.
And I think, you know, another thing, given what Councilmember Kovar raised before and Councilwoman C R C did, going back to, um, when we were looking at, um, the things we raised regarding racial equity and businesses in Tacoma Junction and everything, we spent a lot of time last summer really looking at that and raising some points. That might just be a good thing to keep kind of front of mind. Because we raised a lot of interesting ideas at that point that we may wanna pursue.
Right, and so that can be some, we could have even some standard template agreements and that kind of thing that, that work for that. On Strategy C, I had celebrate and promote local businesses. There was a proposal to put, take affirmative steps to celebrate. I mean, I just celebrated them. But I don't, so I don't care the right, the right term. I wanna be, I don't wanna just say, we're trying to celebrate. I really want to, to promote local business. So however is the best way to convey that.
Intentionally celebrate.
What?
Intentionally.
Intentionally celebrate?
I don't know.
So again, you know, I, I don't know that we need a committee wording of things, but this is one where you can, if there's a better way, that's fine. There's, on Objective Five, um, there can be a lot of county and state regulations, et cetera, that can help and grant funds that could help with these projects. Produce is the big thing. So this is where we've not done anything in the past. We had not produced new housing. We've not produced new businesses. This is new for Tacoma Park. And so how do we produce more housing? How do we produce more opportunities for businesses to start and grow in Tacoma Park? And, um, so we have increased the number of units and the variety of housing types across the affordability spectrum that are attractive to a diverse demographic and do not result in economically segregated communities. This is a huge objective and it's likely to be controversial at times. So I want you to be comfortable with it. This means that there are times, and I know, um, one of our local residents pointed out a, um, an article that talks about you don't wanna have, concentrate poor people. It makes worse outcomes in schools and that kind of thing. As we're looking across the community, there are places where we will need to put higher-cost housing because that helps diversify the, the housing type base in an area, as well as lower-cost housing in some areas, which helps diversify the economic base in those areas. And those are things that are difficult for folks to get their minds around about the appropriateness of the city doing those things and why. It really does go to our race equity issues. It really does dr- address the kind of, um, community that we're looking for. But I just, I just wanna call it out that this is a really big objective. For that, we would encourage and facilitate the creation and expansion of housing types that are underrepresented in Tacoma Park or in particular sections of Tacoma Park, but desired by existing and new residents of various incomes. Changes in allowable use or zoning may be considered as a way to accomplish this. Now, we've had a, our, our City of Tacoma Park Master Plan was approved in 2000, so it's just about 20 years old. We are asking for this mini master plan for a section of the city. This, the Tacoma Langley area had a sector plan that's more up-to-date. We don't have a, a likelihood of having a full-scale master plan process for the whole city. But I think we do need to recognize that, um, there's interest in perhaps changing some zoning. But those are huge conversations, so we need to recognize that it means going through these master planning processes and that those are whole public processes. So in some respects, I don't want to guess at which areas get what. I think that's the community conversation. That's why it's worded as changes in allowable use or zoning may be considered as a way to accomplish this. I'm on-
Page seven.
Objective One, Strategy A, under produce. Page seven, yeah. Then, under Strategy B, adopt housing targets and work to meet them, consistent with the regional housing targets adopted by, um, by COG. And that's a big work item to add to our, um, conversation as a council. So I'm not, we don't have here what target that should be. You could decide if you wanna set the target before you adopt this, or if you wanna say you're coming back to set the target. Encourage and facilitate ways to allow purchase or rental of, I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question? Um, does the, I don't remember what the COG report says about our specific area in terms of housing targets.
It doesn't.
It doesn't, right?
No, no.
It's county, region.
They want us, they want us to find a way to help facilitate the regional goals.
Right.
And there's some language about, yeah, okay. Thank you.
So then Strategy C is one where we don't list a lot of the different programs, but there's a lot of opportunities here as ways to encourage and facilitate the, the purchase or rental of single-family homes by people of moderate incomes. And there can be down payment assistance, tax credits, there's the accessory dwelling unit concept, there's the donations of property. We had that issue that came before you where somebody wanted to donate their house to the city, but we didn't really have a way to make it so that it could be an affordable unit for somebody. There's, uh, shared equity arrangements. A number of, um, nonprofits like to do those kinds of arrangements. And then there was a question that, uh, Councilmember raised about, should we say education of residents and real estate professionals or just, you know, share information? Education's really important. These are folks who do not imagine that they should be going out and telling people, wouldn't you like to donate your house to the city so they can be a moderating? I mean, this is an affirmative discussion that doesn't come up in a brochure. This is some outreach to real estate professionals to say, maybe you should consider working with one of these organizations that can do a sha- shared equity arrangement, so it keeps the long-term price of the house down. So that's why that term was there. It can be changed, but that was, that was why really I, I worked on that one.
That's fine. I mean, I don't need to get into the nitty-gritty. I, it just struck me when I read it that it seemed more like it was potentially emphasizing degrees or technical skills rather than what was actually meant by it. So, but I, I think-
No, that's a good point. I didn't think of that. Okay. Um, Strategy D is specifically related to, so previously we referenced the opportunity of, of upzoning areas of the city. This is, how do we take advantage of the zones we've got and do some infill housing and encourage that kind of thing? Whether it's single-family detached homes, townhouses, multifamily zones, uh, multifamily structures and zones that permit them. And then how do we do these so that they're more affordable and that they're resilient to area, to effects of climate change?
Can I, um, ask a question, maybe make a proposal? So, under Objective One, Strategy A, and it says, changes in allowable use or zoning may be considered. Are we all in enough of, of an agreement that we know we wanna look at this issue? And we could say that, that we wanna look at potential changes in allowable use, zoning, mini-master plans and, and drop the "may"?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Anybody not okay with it? All right.
Just so you know, it's, it's likely.
It's a big thing.
On that note, I, I think in Strategy D, I would like to take out in zones that allow for them because I think that contradicts Strategy A.
It's to, it's to, it's to, for tho- so if, if we go through and we're not there yet to do rezoning, to upzone it, still, how do we encourage use of vacant lots or whatever? That's why that was written that way? I don't know if that's-
I mean, my feeling is it could just be taken out because you could encourage that regardless.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would say I was a little-
I understand what you're saying. I wasn't thinking about it that way, but that's fine.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilwoman Kostik. I was actually getting somewhat confused of the nuance between Strategy D and Objective Two.
Okay.
I, I understand the difference between, you know, higher density infill versus, um, you know, just, um, you know, the, the level of infill that we're talking about under Strategy D, but there's, there's a lot of overlap between the two.
Okay. We didn't have a Strategy D for some time, and so I added that in because we kinda had left out that concept. And so that's, so that may be why it looks over, like, overlapped. So we'll reread that and, and, and think about it.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we need that.
I just wanna say, before we leave Objective One and all these strategies, like, these are a big deal. And they're, um-
This is huge. This is, this is, this is taking Tacoma Park to another level.
And it goes, and it's not explicitly called out here, but in terms of our climate change work, in terms of our racial equity work. Like, I specifically think this Objective One and all these strategies are really-
This takes Tacoma Park to another level that, that gets us to a community that can live for the future.
Yeah.
So can I just say something? I mean, I agree those are, that's a big area. And I don't know about you all, but it feels a little bit like it's beyond our capacity just to do those things.
Well, yeah, we don't have zoning authority.
I, I don't really mean that, but encourage and facilitating the creation of all these things. I, I think it's, this is an area where we need outside partnerships, which is something I've talked about before.
Right, and, and we want that.
Right. But so, this is an area where I really think it would be very valuable to say more specifically. Because the average person that looks at this, well, how are we going to do that?
So instead of Strategy D, which somewhat repeats Objective Two, are you suggesting a Strategy G that talks about partnerships to accomplish this objective?
Well, we, we get to it a little bit in the second objective, but I, I just think that, I mean, a partnership sounds like, and I, and I love them, but, you know, we'll do something with CHEER or whatever, or, or a local NGO. I think we're just talking about something much bigger than that here.
I don't think we're limiting ourselves to.
Right, but I guess.
You want to call it out. You want to call it out.
In fact, the single most important thing, and would probably determine whether I vote for this or not, is if we can explicitly say we want to have a relationship or a partnership or a contract or something with a national or regional NGO or financial institution or nonprofit or foundation or something that could help us do this. Because I honestly just don't think we can do it without that.
So I, I think what you're talking about or some of those partner, that partnership building is spread out, right? So you have six about seeking local, county, state, federal decisions, policy, legislation, all of that good stuff. You have aspects of two, that's Objective Two, that's about developing and maintaining partnerships with entities.
Yeah, two C, right.
You have, so I, I think a lot of these, you have aspects of promotion. I think a lot of the things that you're talking about may be spread out across different objectives or as part of strategies to accomplish those objectives.
That's right. We try to put it in each thing, but really under two C, maybe it's just because it's a single sentence, but that's a huge thing. Develop and maintain partnerships with entities that can facilitate major development in the city is a big deal.
Right.
And, and so somehow, maybe there's some language that you could suggest that helps call that out. But that is, we're already having connect, we're already having discussions with these kinds of national and regional parties that, that may be the right entity that we want to partner with. We just don't know which one or two or three that we want to make those connections with yet.
And those, those entities will vary by project. So it's about partnerships in terms of identifying potential locations for development. So talking to our local churches and, and folks who own property perhaps along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor with an eye for, hey, what are some ways in which we might be able to work together? And then identifying a potential development partner that might be able to work with us. Or maybe identifying an opportunity zone fund that might be able to provide some money. So for each project, we're going to have to build these partnerships around some common goal associated with that site. So I get why they spread it, I get why it's spread out across different things.
I agree with that, but I think also, to me, we need to have one or more bigger relationships where we have a relationship with an outside entity, whichever type it is, that is going to be our sort of bigger partner that's going to help us figure out all those things. Because if we have to individually go to each church or each site where there might be something, it's a lot for a relatively small staff to do. They work very hard and they know how to do it, but they can't do a lot of those things. Whereas I think if we got, you know, I'm not saying it has, it should be Enterprise or Bank of America or the Ford Foundation or whatever, smaller than that obviously, but an entity like that would say, okay, I'm going to work with Tacoma Park and help Tacoma Park figure out how to do all that stuff. To me, that, if we don't have that, we might do a couple of projects, but we're not going to move the dial like we're talking about in this one.
What if we, if we had strategy, what's, Objective Two C, we also have, sorry, I'm like not speaking. Put Strategy C up under Objective One as well. Is that?
Yeah, I can, I can do that. But I, also, I think one of the, one of the things that we have already been finding is that until we do some of this groundwork, we can't have that partner. So we can have these discussions, but they don't come in if we don't have our act together. So there's a certain push and pull that gets us to that big partner. And yes, of course, they're going to come in and they're going to say, and plus, we only want to work with this kind of.
Right. But, but we could have a, a strategy that would say, put out an RFP or a solicitation of interest for this type of thing based on criteria we dictate, based on when we're ready to do it, and then they come in and, and help us. So it's not like we have to, we have to just, you know, sit around waiting for them to come or let them tell us what we should do. We tell them what we want them to do and how we want them to work with us. But that enables us to be able to actually potentially move the dial as opposed to, yeah, doing some other great projects, but probably not enough to make a huge difference. I, I guess that's, that's how I see it.
So let, so let me work on some language, but to me, develop and maintain partnerships, that is a very big active thing. And it may mean coming up with an RFP, but I think, you know, we're not just, we're not just like looking out for, you know, for somebody who can do two houses. You know, we're.
Right. But so if that's true, why not say it?
Okay.
Well, I think, I think one thing that's important to keep in mind too, is that we, we have six, which is seek local, county, state, and federal that support our objectives.
We want the county to do their job.
And, and quite frankly, based on conversations that we had with Secretary McCord's staff, there, there are state reps that are, and county level staff that can help us navigate these waters. We just have to build the right relationships. So again, I, I would stress that I, I don't think it would be feasible to just put out an RFP to hire someone to help us figure out some development project that we haven't even gotten to the point where we brought everyone to the table and at least have an idea of what we want. I, I, I think it's a lot more piecemeal than that. And so I would, I would be hesitant to, I mean, I'm fine with us making sure that we put, develop partnerships throughout, but I, I think that's here. And I think if anything, maybe we tweak six a little bit more to make it a little bit clearer in terms of the amount of partnership building and external stakeholder engagement to identify development partner, something, some way we could say it, instead of making it about some big RFP.
So the other thing that comes in here is that, and this is one of the reasons we're starting a lot of our projects with the Rec Center in New Hampshire Avenue, where we've got the enterprise zone, where we've got the opportunity zone, is that there the zoning is appropriate for the kinds of changes that we would like to see. So for that, that's why we are looking at bringing in the consultant to help us get the public part of this done so that we can go out for that partnership as we go forward and try to get through this mini master plan process. Again, setting the table so that somebody can come in and do something as opposed to having somebody come and say, well, when you change the zoning, which takes two years, well, let us know. And so, but let me work, Councilwoman Kovar, with some other language here that might help strengthen it. So Objective Two is encouraging the construction of new, moderate, and higher-density infill residential, commercial, and mixed-use development and redevelopment. So again, Strategy A, as part of master planning efforts, so recognizing it has to go through a master plan process, work to allow for moderate and higher-density development. In B, encourage moderate and higher-density development and redevelopment in zones. Now, we can take out that allow it if you'd like on this one as well. But one of them is to support applications during the development review process. So if you get a development in and it's as big as the building envelope allows, don't say, make it smaller, right? I mean, or if, if that's the appropriate approach for this thing. Part of this is the council and hopefully our planning board partners would support the applications that meet these goals. Developing the partnerships, encouraging development locations and site plans that create attractive, welcoming, character-rich, walkable, bikeable, transit-accessible, safe neighborhoods throughout the community. Got an extra "and" in there. New construction should be built with climate change in mind, minimizing greenhouse gases, emphasizing energy efficiency, and able to minimize or withstand flooding. As we go through this, new development, it's got to have even like really basic things like the outlets higher up on the walls for when they get flooded. I mean, there's a lot that needs to go into that. And I appreciated Mr. Silverman's comments this evening to that effect. Then cultivating entrepreneurship. We've got some neat entrepreneurs in Tacoma Park. We can celebrate them and we can get more and we can help them. So can we have spaces for them to start and grow their business, whether it's a pop-up space, vending, traditional retail, commercial kitchens, art studios, or other kinds of studios, kind of low-level manufacturing workshops, non-traditional office and collaboration spaces? This is a great way to allow for self-sufficiency among our residents and also keep our economy strong. Expand the knowledge of financial options through our business outreach programs. We're already doing some wonderful aspects of that. And, you know, connecting the staff of the city and other partners to the business owners and entrepreneurs. That's just hasn't happened in the past and it's now being done.
And how is that different from the other one where we're connecting?
We had, I'm sorry. I, this is.
I understand that that's important. And so how is that different from four A?
You mean from on the previous?
Yeah, previous.
So, so this one is, is growing. It's more, it's, it's, it's less preserving, it's more growing.
Okay, so let's somehow distinguish. To me, that's not clear what the difference is.
Okay. Then Objective Four is attracting new business to Tacoma Park and facilitating the growth of existing businesses, particularly those that help meet workforce development, local ownership, or other goals defined by the plan. Again, utilizing the benefits that might be in these opportunity zones, enterprise zones to encourage business investment. Really market the development opportunities in our Tacoma Langley crossroads, New Hampshire Avenue corridor, Long Branch areas, as well as opportunities that might come at the hospital site. Promote high-density development in targeted areas to improve the quality, quantity, and accessibility of commercial space. We have old commercial space. If we want to attract and keep a viable business, they want, they don't want it necessarily to look like 1970. And so we need to have more new space. It also helps allow us to have some of the more attractive buildings that we might want in our community and streetscapes that can come with that. And so approving, improving the attractiveness of the city by improving transportation accessibility, streetscapes, opportunities for public art, quality of business spaces to really keep business owners and attract business owners to our community. People really do think about where do they work and if they like how it looks, it makes a difference. And then we have the assess a higher property tax on developed or vacant commercial structures to encourage reuse. We had also had as a discussion before about doing that with residential properties as a way, so we can just make a note of that under the section about kind of infill development, which is what it is.
Yeah, that was one of the specific questions I had as I wondered what happened to vacant residential.
Right.
So I'd like to see that alluded to in the proper place.
Okay.
I also think for the general objective, in the last section where it talks about particularly those that help meet workforce development, local ownership, or other goals.
Yeah.
It might be useful to add as one of those before the "or other goals," walkable neighborhoods. Because I think if we ha, if we encourage particular types of businesses to come in within a walkable distance of people's homes, that could really provide opportunities for them to access restaurants or food or other amenities within a short distance of their home.
Okay. Objective Five, there was a suggestion to say, improve enforcement. I just said enforce anti-discrimination and race equity provisions in the City of Tacoma Park, Montgomery County, State of Maryland, federal policies and regulations. And, and so one question I know came up, you know, do we, can, are there, are race equity provisions enforceable? Some are, some aren't. Some of them are on ourselves. Are we going to hold people to it or not? There could be some language here. But I think this ends up being particularly important as we, as the various issues that pop up in these new locations.
And one of the reasons that I was suggesting maybe to say improve, saying enforce makes it sound as if there's nothing at all being done, which I don't think is right at the different levels. But I, I guess the real question is, is it accurate to describe our racial equity as, and this is what you just said, but I mean, are we enforcing something that we're at the moment more required to consider and think about as opposed to doing things about? And I just want to make sure that we're, we're using the right verb. That's all. I think we clearly need to do it, but.
Yeah. So I don't like improve enforcement because that makes it sound like we're not doing our job.
I thought, I thought saying enforce makes it sound like we're not doing it at all.
Okay, so, so we'll, I'll work on some language there. To me, to me, our race equity provisions are on you, but as we incorporate them into incentive agreements or other kinds of things, then they may become enforceable. So that's, that's something to, maybe there's a way to word some of that.
Maybe it's implement and enforce? Just thinking about it.
We want them to have a greater impact on, on the work that we do. That's, that's essentially what we're saying here. The question is just how, how we do that. Obviously, if there's federal or state requirements, they're illegally enforceable. That's a different story. And we might want to advocate for those. So that's a, it's a few different kinds of activities, I guess is all I was trying to get across.
No, I appreciate, and I took that. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Going back a couple of versions, there's another way of describing partnerships that, that's build strong collaborative partnerships with neighboring jurisdictions along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. That's a, a more specific way of saying this vaguer develop and maintain partnerships. I don't know if, if it's a better way to say it or not, but I'm just mentioning it.
No, I appreciate that. And I think that in particular about certain locations, New Hampshire Avenue corridor, because of, of how it's divided, that, that may be one that particularly should be called out.
Okay. Sorry to back up.
No, that's why we're here. So then protect, this is really the protecting from discrimination and displacement and protecting the environment from destruction. So use some of the language that has already been raised about also adding safety. One of the things that is important to protect people from discrimination and displacement is for them to be economically self-sufficient so they can also fight for themselves. And so that's why that was added in here. And.
But it's redundant.
Plan, build, maintain properties, buildings, and neighborhoods with environmental sustainability as a major consideration, including climate change resiliency and greenhouse gas reduction. Huge, that's, that's one statement that's a huge statement. It references our, our climate action plan, but it will require a lot of work. I don't know, there were some questions raised. Can we be more explicit on some of these provisions or give some more examples? And I'm open to suggestions on that. People can email me with, with some suggestions on that. There was a couple of these that, you know, it just, I think there was some interest, like, is this all we should be doing to keep from displacement or discrimination? And I'm, we had it pretty broad. I don't know if there's something that, that is, really does call it out, but it actually hit a little bit of a wall riding. So, if somebody comes up with some good language for that, I appreciate it. So that's going through the document. I've taken a number of notes about things to come back with.
Can I just ask one question on Strategy A there? One A, sorry. Use master plan and development policymaking opportunities to make the entire City of Tacoma Park welcoming, characterized, walkable, bikeable, and transit accessible. So the, the challenge, of course, is that we, we don't allow bicycles on some sidewalks. To expand walkability would potentially mean putting in more sidewalks, which would then potentially make it harder to bike. And so unless you, you know, take away people's front yards and so on, say, on Ethan Allen. So is it fair to say we're going to make the entire city have all those things when there are probably trade-offs? I guess that's the only, that's the.
Well, we have to always work on the trade-offs. You know, there's, part of this, and you'll see this as we come back before you with our public space planning process too, is that there are times. public space planning process too, is that there are times when it makes sense to narrow the roadway and increase the areas for bikes and pedestrians. And there may be some places like on New Hampshire Avenue, we're segregating the bicyclists makes sense so that you have that safer way. It is going to be a case-by-case basis. We have a, there is nothing grid-like about Tacoma Park, and so, you know, it's not a perfect answer, but, you know, the more, frankly, the more people are out on bicycles, the more bikeable it is, and people stop, you know, they drive and they get around differently.
Well, I guess the only thing I would say is, in that one, we're saying very affirmatively, we're going to do this thing that maybe we can do and maybe we can't. And then other things, we talk about promoting or to the extent possible, seeking. So is it intentional that in that case, we're saying we're going to make every part of the city have all these things? And then a lot of the other ones, we say, well, if we can do it here, if we can do it there, depending on what the zoning is, depending on what we can find.
So to me, I think the operative term here is neighborhoods, that maybe not every single street has every single asset, but the neighborhood does, and that allows it to not have a segregated community where some people have access to these things and other people don't. It's, to me, it's a big issue on race equity, and that's why it's affirmatively written, but if it needs to be watered down a little bit, it can be.
So Peter, is it, is it the use of in strategy A, the entire city, is that what you're looking at?
Right, because I don't think that we're probably going to do.
Maybe, maybe we could say, use master plan, development and policy-making opportunities to make neighborhoods across the city of Tacoma Park welcoming, character-rich, so.
Or even, you know, to make to the highest extent possible, so it's a real thing we're trying to get, but I just don't want people to think if we can't that we're going to do those things.
I actually would like to do those things. I mean, I actually, and I don't think it's that out of reach. I mean, we have a city that is fairly transit-accessible and could be with not that much additional modification when the purple line comes in. I mean, we have a decent bike system right now and a decent bike network. I think there's a lot more to be done, but we, I don't think we're that far off, and I would actually like to strive to do that.
Well, to strive to do it or to say, we're doing it?
I would like to say we're doing it.
Okay.
Others may disagree, but that's, I would like to say that.
Would you be okay, Casey, if we said to make neighborhoods across the city versus entire city?
I'll think about the exact wording. I mean, I think it could probably just say, policy-making opportunities to make the city of Tacoma Park, like take out the word entire.
If we take out entire, does that help?
And we can, and we can.
Entire is the question. I mean, I don't want to hang up on that.
So what my plan is, is to make a few tweaks based on these comments, identify the items that I think the council will need to come back and talk about so that it's clear that that's a, it's on your agenda as things to really work with.
Talk about after or before.
After adoption of this if possible.
Thank you.
And, and I really, you know, because I do want to get this adopted, but I also don't want to lose any momentum on these other aspects, and I don't want to just have it so that two years or three years from now, I was like, oh yeah, we were going to come up with the criteria for pilots. I mean, I, you know, I really do care, but what I, what I haven't heard tonight, and maybe you'll go home and think about it, but what I haven't heard tonight was any real objection to any of these things. This is a big deal.
Well, I'll speak for myself. It's almost the opposite. I am so excited about this plan and the staff we have in place and all the work we've done on this. I know this has been, hasn't been easy, but, you know, it's not easy for anyone. It's not, it hasn't been easy regionally on the cog board to set those targets. The county is working on this. We're, we're working on very hard things when it's coming to housing and economic development, and, and it's almost harder going from the bigger documents we had from the consultants to say, okay, now we're getting down to exactly the work and what we want to do. So I know, talking to our colleagues in Prince George's, they've been working on their housing plan and, you know, they, they keep saying like, yeah, each time they get closer and closer to actually adopting something, but it is this iterative process that we go through. And I just want to say my appreciation to my colleagues for this work, for the city staff, to the city manager for really getting us to this point and being able to adopt this flaw.
I just want to echo those sentiments. I'm excited to see us move forward. I think this document will, is, I guess, the dam right now that is holding back the flood of progress that we desperately need. And so definitely appreciate all of the hard work that staff has put in, and I think it's going to be really helpful, not just in terms of establishing a work plan for staff, but also establishing a work plan for us. And we'll give the council kind of the framework that it needs to kind of set future agendas. Also, when we're kind of thinking about how we tackle things like the rec center and the next steps associated with that, being able to really go back to this plan and kind of help us think through, are we hitting on all of the key points? So I really appreciate all of the work that staff has put into this, and I think we're getting, we're going in the right, we're almost there, we're almost there.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty excited too. There are some really big things in here, and that's great. I, I have some, based on our conversation, I have some editorial things that I can send you, but I don't see anything in here policy-wise that I have heartburn with. I think this is great.
Great, thank you. All right. Thank you all. Our next item is discussion of committee appointments. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to be discussing appointments to commissions and committees soon. We have a couple people who have, already have names in, and as for the Ethics Commission, reappointment of Ellen Mademan Tanner, and also we have two applicants for the Grants Review Committee, Nicole Ferisolo and Tawanda Anderson, both of Ward one. But I guess the question for tonight is, are there any discussion on these candidates or are there any other people that want to be added to the mix? Seeing none, I guess these will be coming before us in a week or two.
Great, awesome. Our last thing tonight, the city council is scheduled to go into a closed session to after our meeting to discuss matters related to evaluation proposals for legislative advocate. The session will be closed pursuant to annotated Code of Maryland, General Provisions Article, am I reading the right one?
Can we come to the other fourteen? I'm sorry, the one that was in your blue folder.
I'm reading the wrong one. Never mind, scratch, rewind. All right, the city council is scheduled to go into a closed session to discuss matters related to the evaluation proposals for legislative advocate and legal services, and two, to discuss personnel matters. The session will be closed pursuant to annotated Code of Maryland, General Provisions, Article, Section 3-305B 14 and 3-305B 1. The council will not reconvene in, in public after the session. Would someone like to move a motion to go into closed session? Councilwoman Sears, do I have a second? Councilmember Siemens? All those in favor of going into closed session, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, we're in a closed session. Have a good evening, everyone.